The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome, everybody. Grab the minutes, please. I'm sorry, roll call, please.
Stone.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Sims.
Present.
Vasquez.
Here.
Rivas.
Here.
Rickner.
Here.
We have a quorum. Now the minutes, please.
I know this is given to the taxpayers of Porter County that the following appropriations, adjustments to the budget are brought forth to the county council for their consideration. General fund, hourly, an additional $34,000, lease payments, reduction of $115,960, psychiatric services, an additional $10,000, clerk perpetuation fund, contract services, $15,000, public safety data tech contractual services, $852, foundation maintenance agreements, an additional of $11,590.51, school resource officers reimbursement fund, per, an additional $40,000, fatality review fund, other services and charges, $10,000, sheriff DEA proceeds, lease payments, an additional of $116,548, asthma grant, other supplies, an additional $2,000, training and education, $5,300, printing other than office supplies, $1,500, Westchester Public Library rainy day fund, an additional of $953,350. First reading.
Thank you for the first reading.
Two minutes.
Any questions on that? No? Okay, good. First up, we have the commissioners.
We had to do the minutes, as I said.
I'm sorry. All those in favor have accepted to the... Oh, we just did the... Was that the minutes or the first readings?
Yes, first reading.
That's the first reading.
Yep, we're good.
He went fast.
Yep, we're good. Commissioners. Yeah, we have a transfer of $1,500 from equipment, other vehicles to care of patients and inmates.
I really don't know anything about that one. Maybe Jeff does.
Okay. Want to table this one?
I asked Scott McClure if he knew what that was, and he thought that was some kind of federal inmate transfer. No?
This is a transfer of $1,500 commissioner, from Commissioner's general fund, a transfer from equipment and other vehicles to care of patients and inmates because the account is depleted according to our notes.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't know what that is. I don't know how I got on the edge.
Make a motion, we table it.
Yeah, go ahead.
We have a motion, a second to table that one. All of them favor by saying aye to table this one?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll table it.
Thank you.
Sure. Next on the commissioners is ARPA COVID fiscal recovery fund. This is a transfer of $307,952 from MOH contractual to contractual services, ARPA money transfer needed for judge's audio equipment.
Mm-hmm. So we had, in the state legislature, in their infinite wisdom, gave us an unfunded mandate that we have to be able to record all of the trials, and then anybody can ask for a recording, and that has to be in place by the end of the year. And it's a significant dollar amount, and so we started looking at where we could potentially pull funds from, and since the Memorial Opera House is well on its way, and we had a really good understanding of what that was going to cost, we felt that we could pull funding from there. We still have $250,000 in a contingency, just in case something does come up, but Skilman feels very comfortable with where we are, and I did not do that without consulting them, so.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions on that?
Any questions for Commissioner Regnetz?
No. We've talked earlier, and you said it is a complete new heating and air conditioning.
Yes. So everything that we presented over a year ago in terms of the scope, all of that is being done, other than the restrooms, we were not able to do that because that was going to potentially add another $2 million. So we were not able to do that, but everything else on that list is being done.
So where does this fall under? Like, I understand it has to be done. It was talked about last year a couple times, but it's a transfer. Does that stand with them? Because there was certain projects, right, that you guys had to pass ordinance for, and they had to fall under, you know, and there's descriptions underneath that.
Right. We are, we are modifying the ordinance, the upper ordinance for this, so. And we consulted with the auditor on where we should move this, these funds, so we did not just do this arbitrarily.
So you still have to modify your, you still have to amend the ordinance?
Yes. We had first reading, and we will have second reading on June 4th.
And you believe that the opera house, it's, there's enough money to do everything? It came in under budget, or the...
The bids came in very well, and we still have $250,000 in contingency, just in case something should come up that we weren't expecting.
Just talking about ARPA, though, do we know where we're at with, no, I think we talked about it briefly, like, where we're at with all the organizations that was, were granted money, you know, because there's some timelines on stuff, so. I know it's not completely tied to this, but...
Well, they all had a deadline of June 1st to get, to get their commitments in, so we're really, really close on all of it.
Everybody that was awarded has started their projects. If you'd like, we can send you an updated list of all the claims and everything, so you guys can take a look at everything, but everybody's well underway.
Yeah, that'd be nice. So we don't anticipate getting any money, or not allocating the money that is granted out.
We don't have any unallocated, unspoken form money at this point. None.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we need the...
I make a motion, transfer contingent, the approval of Thursday's meeting?
Uh, next Tuesday's meeting.
Yep.
June 4th.
June 4th meeting.
Yep.
We have a motion.
And this is complete, everything that they will need.
Everything.
Nothing hit.
And more.
Second.
More.
Yeah, I mean, it's just going to be beautiful, so. Greg knows. It's going to be stunning, Sylvia.
Okay.
You go, Sylvia?
No.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. County Court Judge Kleimer.
So I know it looks strange, but the $10,000 for psychiatric services is not for the judges. Oh, wait a second. To the extent that it says county court, our courts all use the same fund to pay for psychiatric evaluations of criminal defendants. For a criminal defendant to go trial, to trial, they have to be competent, or to plead guilty, they have to be competent, and in some cases, there's a determination as to whether or not someone was legally insane at the time that they committed a crime. So we need to pay for those examinations. Our spending on psychiatric examinations has gone up this year, in part for two reasons. Number one, we've had more evaluations based on the cases that have been brought before the courts, and number two, one of the doctors who has done the examinations for years has, has increased his prices somewhat, but his prices are still comparable to everybody else, and he gets the reports done quickly. So we need $10,000, which we anticipate holding us over through the rest, rest of the year, but it depends on crimes.
Motion to approve.
Motion, make, I second it. We have a motion and a second for the additional $10,000. Roll call, please. Any other questions, first of all? Nope? Roll call, please.
Stone.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Yes.
Vasquez.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. The sheriff didn't arrest enough people.
Clerk. Esca.
Those might be the right.
Yeah.
Okay, we have an additional $15,000 to contractual services from the clerk perpetuation fund appropriation needed to assist the commissioners and facilities department with paying for moving and reassembly of the clerk shelving unit.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Didn't we pay for some of these costs at the end of last year, too? That's why I remembered.
We moved, um, five years ago from the Portage Courthouse to 157. Now we're moving from 157 to the Vapo courthouse.
I swear, at the end, we approved some money at the end of the year.
So you're moving back?
Yes.
Did you know it was going to be a temporary move?
No. It's been a great project.
You have room for these to go back in your other office?
It's not in our office. It's where probation used to be, because probation moved to 157.
Okay. That's tight.
Yeah. Good thing is, is everything will be under one building, all, in one building, so in inclement weather, we won't have to be sending people from the courthouse over to 157 to grab files when the Portage Courts need them. So there is a silver lining to all of this.
Cal's worried. I mean, you want us to deny this? You don't seem very enthused.
I know.
It's been a project.
The ending is in sight.
Yes, the ending is in sight. All the election equipment will be able to fit at 157, so it'll be a better environment for all of that, more temperature controlled, so that's silver lining there. It's just a lot of work to get it all done.
Do you see expansion coming so that you may have to move again? I'm not being facetious or some, asking a real question.
No, I hope not, because we're now paperless. All of these files are pre-odyssey.
Okay.
We have the motion.
We have a motion and a second.
Yep.
Yes, you do.
Roll call, please.
Sims.
Yes.
Vasquez.
Yes.
Rivas.
No.
Rickner.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
It was coming.
Yes.
Got a real no, or?
A real no, put a smile on her face.
Okay, I'll leave you for no.
Thank you.
See you later, Judge.
Thank you. Health Department.
Do we, or no? Nothing, just seeing if you didn't know this.
He used his no.
Turn.
We have an additional $2,000 to other supplies, additional $5,300 to training and ed, $1,500 to printing, other than office supplies appropriation needed to facilitate staff training, supply and education material procurement for the asthma programs, coming out of your asthma grant fund?
Yes, we just received a new grant from the Department of Health, Indiana Department of Health, for a capacity building grant for an asthma program. So this is a program we've wanted to start in the department, and it came out as an opportunity to, the grant is to train employees, to purchase some operating supplies and then educational materials, and so we're just appropriating the funds that were received from the state, and it's a quick turnaround for the training and to get your education, to get your program up. We have to have everything spent by the end of August.
Mr. President, make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So...
I do.
Oh, go ahead. Sims. How does this work? I mean, is it just telling people what asthma is? Is it people that have asthma trying to get them treatment? It sounds interesting, but I...
Yeah, so there, it can work in different ways. So we can have someone referred from a provider's office to us, in which case it will kind of work in the way that our lead program does. So there will be an environmental component and a nursing component, so the nurses will work with the patients on education about asthma and asthma triggers and controlling their asthma, and making sure that they have an asthma plan, making sure that they have all the proper supplies that they need to correctly manage that, so of course, making sure that they have access to their prescriptions, that they have the spacer to use their inhaler correctly, peak flow meters, and then also, on the environmental side, it'll actually be going into their home and doing an assessment for asthma triggers, making suggestions, educating them on that kind of thing. So it's the training for, I think it's five employees that are being trained, three environmentalists, our care coordinator, and one of the nurses, and we have a nurse who's going to be the head of the program, and they'll work together to go out and do those things.
So is it possible that triggers for asthma could be in the workplace as well as the home, so is that...
Yeah.
Could it be in the workplace, too, then?
Yeah, you know, we haven't, I mean...
This is really intriguing. I am impressed, you know.
That would depend upon employee...
Well, yeah, I mean, it just seems to make sense, right?
Yeah.
No, it's cool.
Most of us are allergic to work, Greg, yeah.
We'll do the assessment on your workplace for it.
Well...
Is this program for those who have had asthma, or those who are new? I'm asking for a friend.
Oh, absolutely. So we, it will be for either patients that are in our office that are identified as needing, of course, we'll speak with them about their asthma, and just feel free to chime in, and make sure that they have all of the information. If we think they need an assessment, then the referral will come directly from us, but also, providers will be able to refer to us, so it can be either, right, depending on whether it's somebody that's new, definitely, or somebody whose asthma isn't as well controlled.
Second question, if they're traveling to people's homes and possibly the workplace, that's travel money, is it not?
It, well, so we have vehicles, but yes, I mean, as far as the gas for the vehicles, but they, they use our health department vehicles, yes.
Is that budgeted, kind of?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for asking.
I look at this, and you'll be possibly treating new for the first time that they're coming in, so that'll be a great point, because they need a lot of support.
Yes, and part of what we do anyway is work with the schools on the school, because schools are required to have a whole school asthma plan, and making sure that, and they all do, each of them have that, and that they also have the supplies that they need as well.
Okay.
Pretty cool. Any other questions or comments? You're good, thank you. Roll call, please.
Rivas.
Yes.
Oh.
Rickner.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
They're smiling.
Yes.
Oh, did you call me? Yes.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff Fallon. All right.
Hello, hello. Does a police car trigger asthma?
People.
Yeah. Some people who are under stress, yes, sir.
They can be allergic to us. Hello.
Sheriff. All right, we have, we have here opiate restricted fund, Form 144, $60,000, so a reduction, reduce $56,000, police resource and outreach associate, a reduction of $4,000 to the police resource and outreach, outreach associate. Is that the social worker?
Yeah, that's the second one we hired. Basically, she is, does not have her master's as of yet. She's in the process of completing it, so because of that, there's, we're not going to pay her the same amount as someone who had, has their master's, such as Sam, plus Sam is also the supervisor, so once she gets her master's degree finished, then we'll reevaluate that, that income, but upon doing, like, a pay scale comparison, we felt like it would be good to start her out at 54,000, or 56,000 rather than 60.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Graham.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Vasquez.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Rickner.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Sheriff's general fund, we have an additional $34,000 to hourly appropriation needed to cover the cost of part-time employees working transports and court security.
Good. Just routine business that we do, and we just came to you for the funding to keep the part-time people going for the, what it's saying, the transportation and the court security details.
Mr. President, make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Was this an unexpected addition, or...
No.
From budgeting from last year to this year, or why the appropriate, why the additional now?
Just because of nothing, nothing more, just when we budget annually, usually we're allotted so much, and then when we use it up, we just come and ask for more.
So you've used up, you're getting close already?
We are getting close already. Part of it is because we've been short employees, and so they've been moving employees around in the jail, using the part-time employees more.
Okay, any other questions, comments on this?
So this should last how long?
The rest of the year.
The end of the year?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a motion and a second.
Yes, we did.
Roll call, please.
Graham.
Yes.
Sims. Yes.
Vasquez.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Rickner.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Six.
Okay. Now we have a reduction of $115,960 lease purchase reduction needed because of cost of 2024 payment for the Axon taser lease, with the additional four tasers out of the sheriff DEA forfeiture proceeds fund. Can you kind of...
So basically, believe it or not, we're coming here to give some money back, $115,000. We'll take it in twenties. Okay, all right, and we're going to make that purchase and pay for that, a couple items down out of our seizure fund.
Motion to approve, the...
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the reduction. Roll call, please.
Sims.
Yes.
Vasquez.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Rickner.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Graham. Yes.
Okay. Next, you have the, an additional $40,000 moving to perf. This appropriation needed to equal the correct percentage of the salary for 2024, this for the SRO, or an SRO?
For all the SROs, this is to pay for their, basically, for them to work the road this summer. The schools cover the, most of the salaries and everything for when they are in school. Now that we're hitting summertime, they will be moved back to the road to help cover shifts, and this is to pay for that.
Make a motion to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions or...
How many SROs are the, is it? Three. Three? Thank you, sir.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Vasquez.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Rickner.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Sims. Yes.
Six.
Next, we have an additional $116,548 to lease purchase appropriation needed to cover the cost of 2024 payment, this for the taser lease, this coming out of your forfeiture proceeds fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for this additional. Any questions, comments?
So it's basically an increase of 588 from the 116 that we just dropped?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we added the four additional tasers, and it's over the four years, it was a small amount.
Let's go, you.
Any other question in relation to this? Roll call, please.
Rickner.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Vasquez.
Yes.
Yes.
Six.
Okay. The jail public safety data tech fund, this is an additional $852 to contractual services appropriation needed to cover the cost of 2024 price increase for the policy and manual SOP services.
Make a motion to approve, Mr. President.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Stone.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Sims. Yes.
Vasquez.
Yes.
Rivas.
Yes.
Rickner.
Yes.
Six.
Okay, next, Federal Prison DOC General Fund. This is a transfer, $25,000 from ammunition to...
Motion to approve.
Overtime. We have a motion...
Second.
And a second on the transfer. Any questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Bless you.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Very good. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job with the memorial. It was outstanding.
Oh, thank you.
Cool. I encourage anyone who hasn't seen it, go see it.
Yes. The, the phrase you put on there was absolutely perfect. Thank you, I appreciate that. Appreciate you guys being there.
Yeah, no, it's good. Thank you.
Coroner. Cindy. How are you? We have additional, we have an additional $10,000 request to other services appropriation needed to cover hospital fees for autopsies through the end of the year coming out of your coroner fatality review fund.
Yes.
Here we go again, the autopsy, favorite thing.
Yeah, we have to pay, um...
Next to a new van.
Yeah.
All right.
Pay the hospital each time we have an autopsy, and we've had a lot of autopsies, so...
Do you have a lot of them?
Yeah, we've, as of yesterday, we've had 50 already.
Well, how many do you have? What would be your normal number this time of year? What would be a, seeing how it's an increase, what did you have last year?
Um, we had 30 last year. Yeah.
By this time?
We have... Yeah.
Whole year?
Didn't you say?
No, just at this ti- as of yes.
This time last year?
Yeah, we had thirty last year, and we've, we have fifty this year.
Uh, your best guess, you think this'll cover it for the end of the year?
I'm, I'm hoping so.
So, okay.
Yeah. Cause the most we've had so far is like a hundred and one. I think that was two years ago, last year we had ninety-one.
Just out of curiosity, what's it cost per autopsy? Are, do they vary?
Um, well, it depend, we, we have to pay, um, the hospital to use the morgue, and we have to pay the hospital. We do get discounts on any x-rays or blood work, any additional services that we need, and then we just pay the pathologist monthly.
Mr. President, make a motion to approve the-
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Seeing none, uh, roll call, please.
Graham.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Vasquez.
Yes.
Vivas.
Yes.
Brickner.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Thanks, Cindy.
Right, thank you.
E nine one one.
Good job.
Okay, we have an additional eleven thousand five hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-one cents, uh, going to maintenance agreements appropriation needed for the cost difference reflected in the Motorola Solutions Change Order Number Three for the Nimble Server Storage Upgrade out of your Foundation Fund.
Yes. So, this was, um, unexpected when I believe the contract was signed initially. We purchased eleven terabytes of storage with the massive amount of data that we are migrating. We've Motorola said and advised that at the rate of expansion, we're probably looking at two to three, maybe four years after we go live, in which that eleven terabytes will be used. And to be proactive and for cost reasons, they've advised to purchase this now, so that we have ample storage when the time comes. In addition, if we wait, then you, you, you could possibly encounter bogging down of the system or even crashing of the system. So this is proactive in nature as well as fiscally responsible.
Make a motion to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion?
Second to the discussion. I'd like to know, um, you don't have a, any other funds or other sources that this could come out of?
Well, no, not necessarily. I have, um, last year, the, the budget probably reflected that there was a lot left in my maintenance agreement. However, that mon- that money is placed there because once we go live, that's when Motorola will begin, um, taking that maintenance payment out yearly, annually. So, in the past, you've probably seen that I've had ample money in that line item. We are anticipating going live this year, and we will have that maintenance fee annually will begin as soon as we go live.
Debbie, I've got a, you know, I don't know if this is a dumb question, um, there's a, there's an MOU with other agencies for this contract?
Yes.
And I'm looking at the spreadsheet, and it has Porter County nine one one, uh, at their share, eleven thousand five hundred and ninety dollars, and Porter County Sheriff has their share six thousand one forty. Those are just portage, volp, yes, and Porter. Doesn't seem like the county's paying for two of its agencies out of the county for the same MOU. Am I reading something?
How I, how I came to these numbers was I pulled the MOU that was established initially when the contract was, uh, signed. And I broke down those payments that are, uh, for the equipment lease yearly and also the maintenance. And I was able to, based on those numbers, establish a percentage that at that time was agreed upon and, and, and contractually everyone signed off on. So that's the percentage amount that I used when I got this change order. This change order, actually, if you'll notice, um, I know I sent you a lot of literature over the past couple months about it, so I'll kind of break it down. We had a change order, this is our third change order. With our second change order, um, we had actually not done some of the interface work that was built out in the contract, so they were giving us a credit, which I, I negotiated with Motorola, just dump it now, so that we have, so this drops our, our, our third change order, um, cost a little bit lower, which it did, to the, to the total of twenty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-nine nineteen. Regarding the MOU, Attorney McClure has sent out to all the municipalities a letter with this information, um, and I believe that was sent within the past few months. He had to get approval from the commissioners for that letter. He shared it with me, and he sent that out. So, in fairness, I have not received any correspondence or, uh, questions from any of the other agencies within this agreement regarding their cost. But I know that this eleven thousand five ninety, I had budgeted it last budget cycle, so that's why I'm coming before you today.
Well, I guess my question, and again, um, it seems like the Porter County, we fund Porter County nine one one and Porter County Sheriff. Shouldn't Porter County, like, it, it, as one totality, be one portion of the MOU instead of, it seems like we're funding, it seems like nine one pays eleven thousand, Sheriff pays six thousand, everybody else pays the balance, but we fund both agencies.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I talked with the sheriff about, uh, sheriff about this today, and we all pull from the same pot. However, because each entity was responsible for their own portion of this annually, I, I didn't feel that it was in my purview to ask for money from, that another agency in the current MOU with, um, the maintenance cost and the equipment cost. If, I would be happy to work out with the sheriff if he'd like me to increase this, um, request to incorporate his department as well. I just know that with my budget, based on the current MOU, that's how I came up with these numbers.
Okay. Any other questions?
How, how many other counties in the state use this kind of system?
P one, uh, Premier One Motorola. Well, I know that Indianapolis uses Premier One, I know that Saint Joe uses Premier One.
Okay, do you know how they bill? How, how do they bill this? Like, the question is, you know, from Brickner was, you know, again, why are we, why is the county bearing the brunt of this fee? If the other counties are using the same system, do we know how they are splitting this up amongst their entities?
I do not know that answer. I know that, um, from what, obviously, the percentage that was established initially was prior to, to my tenure here. However, if I understand it correctly, that was agreed upon based on, um, call volume, and also, um, I think, um, from the nine one one perspective, I mean, we have our hands in every call within the county, so I believe that it was based on call volume. And population, sorry, and population too, was another metric.
Okay.
I just had a question, is there a reason that this wasn't used as a transfer? Transfer form instead of additional? Because you said you have it in your maintenance agreement, so I was just wondering why you chose the additional?
Because, um, as I stated, my maintenance agreement, when we go live, it will not be there, because our maintenance agreement, I believe, yearly is over ninety thousand dollars. So, we do anticipate going live this year, and so with, with that, my maintenance budget is, is pretty tight right now, including I had, I believe I, uh, increased my maintenance line item last year fifteen thousand for our increased, some of the, what, what inflation has caused for that budget line item, and that's why I had not budgeted for eleven thousand five hundred and ninety dollars for this.
And what about the surcharge, is that, is that able to cover any of these costs? You have a substantial amount in your surcharge.
Well-
Does it cover any of the maintenance or the equipment?
Um, I can go back and look at eligible expenses, however, as we discussed, um, with the wage increase and also the money that was moved in there from the, uh, E nine one one and, uh, internet service as well as our training budget that's been moved in there, it is not solvent. So, we know that we do have a surplus at that ti- at this time, but we have already discussed at both last budget cycle and the previous budget cycle, that, that will be just dipping into that surplus we have, and that's obviously, as we all are aware, that's, that's something you can bank on consistently.
How much is in there in the surplus?
Looking right now, right?
Yes, and it was, I believe, you, last year was one seven, so it is, we have dipped into that. Um, we moved, our first year, we moved one, um, two line items into there. We've now removed the, um, additional line item, because I purchased, um, fire station alerting equipment last year with that. We've kept the training budget, which was moved in there, not last budget cycle, but the previous, and the auditor's department moved in part of our E nine one one, um, internet services in there. Now, however, that, that has to be split, because there are eligible expenses that can be, um, taken from the surcharge. Some of our nine one one phone and internet services do not fall within those eligible expenses, so that had to be split.
Do we have a ba- are, were you looking for a balance of the surcharge, or is that what you asked? Yeah, how much was in there?
I thought you said-
Bill looking?
A million something, did you say?
One point-
One point five, yes.
Five hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
I'm sorry?
One million five hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
I'm just gonna defer to you for a second, Karen.
We have to file an additional, um, yeah, advertisement to go underneath that fund, since we've already advertised under the-
But this isn't like an immediate thing anyway. You don't even have the other money from the other agents.
Would you give her time to review those numbers you were talking about?
I'm sorry?
Would you give her time to review those numbers you were talking about?
So, table it and see if we can find, uh-
That's up to you.
Uh, I would prefer that, if it's, if it's doable, to see if we can find these funds, if we can use them out of the surcharge money. I don't know what the, anybody else thinks about that?
I do have a question regarding the funds that you had in question, is if there's some type of review regarding the percentages that I broke down this cost for, um, I don't know that it's within my purview to establish that metric. I believe that was established probably at a county attorney level. Again, I just pulled these percentages from the MOU that was established at contract signing.
And the MOUs have already gone, been accepted by the municipalities?
Then I think these numbers are static.
Yep.
That's, that's where I would say, with these numbers anyway, the cost to each agency.
Is the reason the county is so high, I mean, cause those are all, say, you know, police department, police, we cover half the county for ambulance service, are those our calls? Are we absorbing that? Is that why the percentage, or you don't?
Um, this is related, to give you a little bit of background, this is related entirely to police data. So, fire data is not stored within Porter County. Fire data has, they have purchased their own software companies, some of them go through Fire Program, PSO, um, Mobilize, there's, there's a, there's an array of software programs that hold the fire services data. We do not store that. We store all of the police department's data within this county. So that's, that's why this, this is, uh, police department only in specific.
Okay. I wanna make, uh, sure, I guess I could make a motion to, to, do we have a motion already?
I made a motion, I don't know if it was second, I would draw my motion.
I was just gonna see if the council would entertain maybe tabling this until-
For the next meeting?
Have some time to explore other funding.
Do you feel like there's any emergency, uh, that you're comfortable in less tabling it to the next meeting?
Um, yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily think there's a sense of urgency until the next meeting, I think we'd be fine.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'll make a motion, we table it to the next meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table this, uh, and we can explore with the auditor-
Right.
Uh, maybe some alternatives of where to take the money from, and, and go from there. Oh, so we have that motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? Okay.
We gotta, we have to vote on-
Is this a, since we're not going with the additional on the table, is this a roll call or voice?
Vote.
Okay, all in favor by tabling this, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thanks, Debbie.
Thanks, Deb. Is this, this is what we talked before you?
It is, yes.
Okay.
Okay, Memorial Opera House. Megan. Is Megan here?
Come on, Megan.
Anybody from the Memorial Opera House here?
No.
Okay.
Motion we table till next, till next month.
That's really odd.
Second.
Uh, yeah, okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, maybe something's come up, um, to table this until we have somebody from the Opera House here that can, uh, discuss this. All those in favor, uh, to table this, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries to table MOH. Okay, Westchester Public Library. Hi. Hey, we have a, uh, additional request, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to be other services and charges. Reason, Westchester Public Library request the additional appropriate from its, from its own savings and reserves to rainy day fund replace the leaky roof and failing HVAC. This looks like it's coming out of your rainy day fund.
Ava.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments reference to this?
What's having that rainy day fund?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. I believe it's an additional three million on top of what we're requesting tonight.
That come from all late fees? I'll turn the book. That's a lot of money.
Yeah, yeah.
I make a motion, we approve the nine fifty-three, three fifty. Thank you for, uh, saving up your rainy day fund and using it for operating.
Thank you.
Daughter loves using the library, she was just today with her little daughter.
Oh, good, good.
Flash cards and see could-
Yeah.
How much stuff there was for her kids.
Awesome.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
We have a motion? We have a second?
A second.
We have a second, all right. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, uh, roll call, please.
Brickner. Brickner?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Loza? I'm sorry, Stone.
Yes.
Vasquez?
Uh, yes, I just-
Vivas?
Yes. Yeah, he would've, I asked the question for him what the balance was, and Bob was here in spirit.
Thank you.
That balance. Keep doing, take care of that money.
Just out of curi- yeah, just out of curiosity. Iran certificate, I, I R A N, that's Iran.
Where you at?
It's on the, uh, second page, below qualification statement, or E verification. Didn't know we had to approve them for that.
Actually, Andy, this could be something to do with federal putting out for, for contracts, but it has something to do with, you know, this is with Iran, and I think we're excluded.
I'm just curious if it was, I saw Iran.
We do a lot of federal, whether it be federal or whatever, a lot of certification stuff that if they get put on a list, we have to verify that we are not offering any materials, funds, or labor from Iran or, I don't know. We have to sign some-
That's true.
I think that's what that's-
That's what he's saying.
Yeah, that's what, that's what that represents.
Okay.
We asked her before, I think.
I just thought I'd ask.
It's true. There's a lot of stuff you have to do when you're- We just sign usually half the stuff, but that one piqued my interest.
Yeah, I had mine.
And certification, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's Ayatollah approved.
All right. I think we have briefed through this agenda. Anything else here? Doesn't look like it. Uh, I think we're ready for the, uh, second reading, please.
Yes, sir. The following, the following appropriation adjustments to county budget for the year twenty twenty-four have been considered before the council. General Fund, hourly thirty-four thousand dollars, lease payments, a reduction of one hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and sixty, psychiatric services, an additional ten thousand. Clerk Perpetuation Fund, contractual services fifteen thousand. Public Safety Data Tech, contractual eight hundred and fifty-two. Foundation Maintenance Agreements, table, uh, SRO reimbursement fund, perf, an additional forty thousand dollars. Fatality Review Fund, other services and charges, additional ten thousand. Sheriff DEA Prof Fund, lease payments, an additional of one hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred and forty-eight. Asthma Grant, an additional, other supplies, two thousand. Training and Education, fifty-three hundred, Printing and Office Supplies, fifteen hundred. Westchester Public Library Rainy Day Fund, an additional of nine hundred and fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Second reading.
Thank you for that, um-
Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Motion and a second to approve, reading. Roll call, please.
Stone.
Yes.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Yes.
Vivas.
Yes.
Brickner.
Yes.
Six.
Very good, thank you. How we are to this question, uh, any other matter to come before the council? We have a PRISM, uh, board appointment. I think everybody has a list. We have four applicants to fill the vacancy, uh, left by Mitch Peters when, uh, he resigned. We have Cameron Wild, fourteen oh five Monticello Park Drive, Alperazo. We have Andy Vasquez, yours is one and only, forty-nine East, five hundred South, Couch. Ryan Peters, one seventy-two Windridge Road, Alperazo. And, uh, George Romero of two sixteen Cessna Drive in Burns Harbor are four applicants to fill the vacancy.
What is the thought with Andy, um, applying? I mean, I, I kinda, I watched the, you know, the video from last meeting that wasn't here, shameful for the most part, but it, it, it makes sense to possibly, if, as a board, we want to have somebody on there. Not opposed to that concept, but, uh, I don't know about getting rid of our, um, citizen appointment, you know? Um, I think we want citizen engagement, we, you know? If we wanna sit on there, we should ask the commissioners to, you know, maybe have the council president or his pro- Have the council president or his proxy, you know, but, you know, have him amend the ordinance.
The spirit of, the sp- the spirit of, uh, Andy, I believe, applying, I, when we talked about this at the, at the meeting was having a, having council representation. And if, uh, the commissioners do rewrite the ordinance, I believe we'd get two picks, so we'd have a council, uh, pick, and then we'd have a citizen representation pick.
So the commissioners have already?
No, they have not. I'm saying, uh, if they, if they do decide to, uh, you know, put an ordinance in and. Kind of reshuffle how the tourism board is made up.
Well, we have liaisons too that can easily be a, a communication bridge. So, you know, we seem to be forgetting about that.
Well, you're right, but, yeah, the communication bridge wasn't, uh, well communicated, so.
So you're gonna let one thing just disrupt everything? I mean, so all the other boards that have things, you wanna shuffle everything?
No, I just, listen, first off, I'm not a commissioner. If I was, it'd already been reshuffled. I'll be honest. Second off, um, we have a. Council person on the storm water. We have a council person on recycling. We have a council person, I believe the president sits on the plan commission, so this isn't something, there might be more, I don't know.
We don't have one on the health department? Or the opera house?
Pita boa.
Or Pita boa?
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm just giving examples, so, uh, but, you know.
I think citizen appoint, citizen participation is critical, especially stuff like this. Um, I mean, I, we're, we're, we're taking away our citizen appointment here. Like Greg said, there's nothing that stops Andy from going, any of us going to any of their meetings. Participating, even late liaison or not, um.
Right.
But I think if, if we want, I mean, I. Request.
It killed, it killed two burns with one stone because, no pun intended, uh, Andy, I believe, was on the dueling chamber.
Yes.
While you're on it.
I still am, I still am.
Still on the dueling chamber, correct?
I'm in the dueling chamber.
Um, and you were on the farmer's market. You go and I think you started Portage Farmer's Market, so.
Yeah.
You do have an interest.
And Miller Beach and River Forest and a few others.
Yeah.
I was on the tourism board, uh, years ago, and, uh, that was. We made a lot of progress during that time, but I do not choose to be on this time.
Well, my primary reason was that, um, well, we do have the availability.
Before I was elected.
Be at the meeting. By being on the board, participation in regards to vote would be even more so. That's all.
I disagree, and if that's what we want, we should ask the commissioners to, you know, again, maybe have the president, you know, by virtue of office, have, you know. Have a seat, or he could appoint, you know, his proxy, which could be any of, you know, whoever he so chooses, but to loot, to just us bump a citizen, you know, I, I think we should. State of that as much citizen, you know, engagement as we can get.
Well, I'd be willing to table it until we have the commissioners look at this, then.
I don't think it's going to be an issue, but.
We have an extension already on the thirty days.
Yeah, we do, yeah. Um, I, uh, I don't think the tourism board is going to, the, the statute requires that. Or gives us thirty days to make a replacement, and then if not, the tourism, uh, board can make the replacement selection for us. I've talked to the, the new attorney for the tourism board, uh, Pat Clip, and he's indicated that they have no desire to. Step on our toes or do anything to get way of our appointment. But, uh, you know, I, I would feel most comfortable going back, if we were to table it, going back to him and just.
Another extension?
Yeah, yeah, and I don't think it, I really don't think it's gonna be an issue, but I think we need to definitely do that, or I should. Do that if we decide to table it. It's, it's not difficult whatsoever to, to do. But I think we need to, I, I just wanted to make sure that that was addressed, because there, there, there's that slim. Possibility that, you know, until we get that extension, someone could get a wild hair and decide to make our appointment on our behalf, which.
I talked to Christine Lewis, and they're supposed to meet Thursday out there. She wants to show me around, and she brought that up, saying, um, about, you know, hey, we're not looking to fill your appointment.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, that was, it was.
I mean, it's not.
Well, I've got a meeting with her tomorrow.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna be, I don't think we have to worry, but we're, we're worried about that.
I, I think though, quite truthfully, this should be a. Somebody that's not on the council. I think it's important to have input from the public on, on these boards.
I mean, I think there's eleven people on a board. I think a lot of them are.
Yeah, but this is our appointment.
Yeah, you're right. It's our appointment. It'd be nice to know, you know, we, we have somebody that's, that's sitting here that can, that can tell us monthly if we have any, any questions, plus we have.
Thus the liaisons could, could do that, or like Jeremy said, he one of us.
But again.
So Brett, if you want to go to one of their meetings and sit in, you're welcome to do that.
Again, the liaisons didn't do a good job of communicating, so apparently we have a problem with the liaisons. We, we, you know, they come in front of us with the budget. They, you know, have a lot of money, so.
There were some people that had a problem.
Mitch sat in front of us every time that there was a request. Mitch, more than any board member in this county, sat in front of us. More than any appointed point, board member came anytime tourism was in front of us.
If you want to table, we'll table it.
Harold, there isn't anything that prevents a sitting councilperson from.
I, I just looked to see if there was under the ordinance or the enabling statute, and I don't see anything that would prohibit. A sitting or elected official, a sitting councilman or an elected official for that matter from serving as an appointment. So legally, I don't see any.
Doing both.
Prohibition against that, but, uh, you know, other than, I think it's more of a political question. So legally, no.
I make a motion we table till next month.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, but do, do we, should we get? Should the, should we reach out again to Attorney Lip?
Yeah.
And.
I will do that tomorrow.
Says, you know what, you've had your, you know what, I doubt he's gonna, Patrick's gonna say that, but.
He, it, it's gonna, it, it should not be an issue whatsoever. Uh, I, but I just, my, you know, as a lawyer, I worry about worst case scenarios and, you know, even if it's. An unlikely event, I mean, unlikely events do happen, and so my job is to advise. I'm not worried about.
Why are we tabling it?
Do you have commissioners looking, possibly change? Well, well, there is no legal reason to wind up you that he sees, but to have, I believe this goes back to the commissioners.
Well, this, this isn't gonna get done by the commissioners in one month, but, you know, we can, you know, take some time, review it, and, you know, next month we come back at it and.
Well, can we ask the commissioners, uh, you know, if they will amend the ordinance to give the, the president a seat and. We could also have a citizen appointment.
Well, the thing that we were trying to do, Jeremy, is I think in the, in the, in the spirit of, uh, um. Trying to reorganize it is to have somebody that, per state statute, you probably know better than I, you have to have some type of industry experience in tourism.
Six of the, six have to have some sort of.
Six have to have some direct, so I think we're out of balance with that right now, I believe, possibly.
I don't know the answer to that. That's not, I've not looked into that, but.
So my, my, my thought process was Andy has, you know, serves on the chamber, he's a member, he does a farmer's market, he's involved in, in this, or, you know. He relies on, on tourists buying his products, so I thought that if there was any one of us that was qualified, it was, it sure isn't me.
And plus he wants to do it.
And then he wants to do it, so.
You have to want to do it.
He wants to, he wants to be involved and wants to do it, so.
Well, I'm trying to see what the, I guess what you're saying is we're gonna lose a citizen.
Yeah, so, so do those citizens that applied, you know.
Right.
So my thing was, as you had mentioned, Jeremy, is that the commissioners redoing the ordinance so that of citizen and, say, a member from this board would be, uh, appointed. I have no problem with that.
Yeah, we're not bumping a citizen. I mean, there's always been, I mean, there's interest right there, you know, we want citizen engagement, right?
Well, other than losing a citizen appointment, I, I don't think any wrong with it personally, but we have a motion and a second to table it, so, um. If we wanna, if we want to table it.
I think Andy would do a good job if you weren't even on the council, Andy, but.
Do you have, do we have a motion and a second?
Not.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second to table it.
Yeah.
So unless there's, that's what we want to do, um, I personally would like to get this done. Yeah, I'll see, you know, again, just speaking, you know, uh, that, um, I don't see any, any better person, I don't know who we're gonna find that would. Serve the tourism board more effectively.
So, so what you're saying is you do want to replace the, uh, private citizen appointment?
Uh, not that I want to, but I think we have an opportunity to put somebody on there that would represent us well.
Or both.
This, in the way things are, we have somebody from the council who wants to do it, and I think would, um, would do a very good job, so. Uh, I don't know what difference it makes, to be honest with you, in the scheme of things.
Well, truthfully, I think it's important that the citizens do, when we do have a board, that, uh, they have the, uh, ability to. Practice and, and be a part of, uh, government.
I don't dispute that.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't disagree with that at all.
Is there a motion?
There is a motion and a second.
To table.
We have a motion, a second to table it. Uh, so I guess we need.
A vote.
Yeah, we need, uh, a, a vote, Madam Auditor.
Graham?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Vasquez?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Brickner?
No.
And Stone?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries to table us to the next meeting. All right, any other business before we move into the public comment session? Does anybody from the council have anything else to share?
Just anybody having conversations? I, I met with the one commissioner and a couple council members about the jail. Uh, or the garage, the garage mall and, and the jail, so, um. I mean, do you guys have anything to report, President Brickner? I mean, have you been talking to the commissioners? On, I know you were a big advocate last year of, you know, wanting to know where all the money's going and.
There's two questions. First of all, have I been talking to commissioners? And yes. Do I have any report on any updates for the jail or the, uh, uh, county garage? No.
No? All right, well, I know that from our meeting, they're, I think they're opening bids on the twenty-fifth. I think they're award on the second for the garage.
Hey, Red.
Wanting to start construction in August.
My friend, thank you.
That leaves six million for the jail roof. I think that's correct, right? But. You know, there's a lot more work to do with the jail, so. And other, other buildings, I, I asked the commissioners to, you know, as we did last year, what other projects do we have that's out there? J D C. This roof, you know, anything, and I know, you know, we've gone through, uh, a facilities director, so we have a new one, I, I. You know, I believe he's trying to get an assessment of all our buildings and, uh, I'm not sure, uh. The commissioners are gonna engage Gilman to look at. The J D C, you know, to see what that cost could be potentially. Knowing what's out there. In terms of large cap of projects, six million isn't gonna get it done in the jail.
Well, I don't know. Is there a question somewhere on what you're talking or just talking?
Just talking.
Commissioner Regno was here on an unrelated issue, uh, sitting in front of us, and, you know, you could have asked her while she was here.
I asked her, you know, a number of questions. I don't know what conversations you're having.
I didn't hear you ask her anything.
When we met?
No, I mean, when she was sitting right here, you seemed to have these questions, or you're just talking, or is there?
I'm asking, I mean, you had a lot of questions.
A question in your comments?
Yeah, what, what information do you know about what's going on? What information do you know about this project? Are we gonna approve the rest of the money and pay for that eighteen million dollar garage? Is that, is that the, the direction for sure of the council? I mean. That, again, we have a J D C out there. We have a lot of buildings out there. We have basically twenty-five million dollars. They're going out with an eighteen million dollar garage project, leaving. Again, six million dollars basically for a jail, which isn't gonna get it done. So, yeah, I think these conversations need to be happened publicly, so whether it's a question or not, and I know you sat here last year and was like, I want to know where this is going. I want to, I want a list of everything. I mean, so, I mean, do we know what's out there? We just gonna, at the beginning, approve, finish approving an eighteen million dollar project that corners us really on. Some other large capital projects that are out there.
Well.
Or, I mean, we've spent a lot of time this year talking about, you know, a two hundred thousand dollar, you know, payout, but we're not spending any time discussing twenty-five million dollars. But I didn't mean to bother you on twenty-five million dollars of taxpayer money.
Jeremy, you know what? My gosh.
Gosh, it's.
You've known the whole, you have known, you've, you know what, 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 what they're doing with the.
Haven't been a fan of it. Haven't been a fan of it.
With the, uh, garage and the jail.
And haven't been a fan of it.
I mean, you know.
Are we to not talk about this stuff? Twenty-five million dollars in a public meeting?
We, well, we have. We've had studies. We've had, we've talked about different stuff, and I don't know, you know, what, what more you want to talk about. I mean, I, I think we've. Talked about this at nause. Maybe we.
Nah, publicly this year.
I mean, you went to a jail, or a, uh, the garage meeting, right? Did you, this, did you share your?
I did, yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
We all shared our concerns.
Is there concerns? Is there disgust? And talk about it here.
Quite truthfully, we shared our concerns that we were not getting any information on what has, what, what the plan is, with the project, and that's, we saw it that day. When we had the meeting, what was, was that, three weeks ago, maybe?
About three weeks.
Two weeks? Whatever. That's when we, uh, found out, uh, what information we were given.
You know what, I, um, I do meet with the commissioners, uh, Commissioner Biggs, and how about, um, um, ask for, get an update for our next meeting?
And then be fine.
Yeah.
And be good.
We can do that. How's that sound?
It sounds great.
It does sound good.
Okay.
Any communication is really appreciated.
We can get an update.
We just tossed a guy off a board because he wasn't communicating, but we're about ready to spend twenty-five million dollars and it's hard.
Jeremy, we thought, first off, we didn't toss a guy out. He resigned.
He attempted.
If you can answer why somebody got paid two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, anybody on that side can answer, I'd like to know it, because I still don't know it. And I, like I said, was the one up here that is, that did the most digging, and I still don't know why the taxpayers foot the bill for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for someone who's not working. That does not happen in county government. It should never happen in county government, so when you conflate a garage and two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, that's wrong.
We've, we've settled with employees in the past. I don't know.
Quite truthfully, there was a contract that had to be, uh.
Again, if you can answer why she is gone.
No, no, your question was, can you tell me why we had to pay two hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Why, why is she gone?
As a co, I don't know why she's gone. We all sat in that room. We, I can't really tell you, except she signed the contract. First of all, the contract was signed by Mitch Peters for her to be employed. Okay, that is a county, that is a contract. I wasn't aware. That he, um, had that right to have a contract, but apparently he did. Now, um. She decided she agreed that she would resign.
No, she did not.
Nobody, none of us can really say why.
She was forced to resign. She said here publicly, I did not want to resign. She did not want to resign, so we still, they don't know.
Sign the paper then?
Well, because let's, let's see, you're fifty-six years old, you're reinforced out, you're gonna lose your healthcare coverage, kind of hard to find a job, and county government is telling you, you know what? For some reason, we want to go a different direction.
Well.
Eleven board members and two attorneys.
My point is, it's our job to come.
Should have been at the last meeting, you've asked all these questions, but it was five, it was five executive.
And we had a bill in front of us, and that's what we were, we settled the bill.
Back to the original thing, which was the garage. All the rest of that is history. We all know that it happened, and there's nothing we can do about it. That's.
That's what we wish.
We took, well, we took a vote, uh, and Mitch Peters was not removed. The vote was to not remove him.
Yeah, so there is.
And he resigned. Uh, later, on his own free will. Nobody forced him to do that. He could have stayed.
I can't argue with that.
So I think that this issue.
This issue is gone.
Past this issue. And, um, we will, you know, we'll get, uh, just talking, whispering the joy, but we'll have Commissioner, uh, try and give us an update on Jeremy's, uh, comments about the, the garage status, the jail status, uh, for our next meeting.
And what's next?
So we kind of get up to date on what, uh, what that is for everybody.
I mean, it's six million on the, on the jail is not going to, it's a roof, so.
Sounds good. Communication, that's all.
Well, and to finish that, you guys, Mike, you said you met with commissioners about the ambulance stuff last meeting. I mean, what was, what, what is going on? I mean, I think it's, you know, I.
My last meeting with the commissioners, we didn't talk about.
No, you said you had talked to the commissioners about the ambulance.
About the what?
The last meeting. You stated that you had talked to Commissioner Biggs about the ambulance service or what's going on with that.
Yeah, that's, there's, there are no answers on that a hundred percent. You know, and if I do get something that is, you know, you know, this group will be the first to know what I know. It's still a work in progress.
I mean, we all saw that, that email that came across.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't agree with contracting out public safety, you know, at all. You know, you guys, I think anybody I've talked to that, that I, I'd rather have, have every community have professional emergency services, you know, available around the clock, not, not contracting. I, I know you wouldn't be okay with contracting a security company to buy police or, I'm not saying, I mean, Northwest Health is a, it's a for-profit private business that's covering half the county for ambulance service, and there seems to be an issue out there.
Yeah, there's definitely going to be some, uh, we got some, we have our work cut off for us when it comes to, uh, some things coming down the pipe. There's no question about it. How to pay for it.
What it looks like, not just how to pay for it, you know, I'm, I'm not going to continue to support giving money to a private entity that I don't, at least in my opinion, there seems to be some issues there. You know? Are they, you know, not only what we saw in that email, but, you know, are they, are they living up to the contract? I mean, what else is out there?
Which, which email?
Yeah.
That all, most of their employees signed that was basically saying that no, no confidence in the director?
Oh.
I mean, that's, that's not a good thing.
I've seen, I've seen him, uh, I, I, you know, as far as, um, I don't even know if there's any follow-through. You know, he's been at some meetings continuously, so I guess he's still the director. Yeah. I haven't seen any follow-up on, in reference to that, being copied on that.
Yeah, I would just pick up nine-one-one, you know, call because a family member, you know, something's going on. I think we want, we want the best for every, every citizen in this county.
And I agree.
You know? Not, you know, well, maybe we're rigged short today because we had to transport this way, or there's, we should be providing the best services.
Is that what they're doing?
I don't know, might want to, yeah, might want to figure out. I mean, something's going on that all those employees signed a no confidence. What, why? What's, what's going on?
I don't know.
You know, it's, it's emergency services, so. We pay for it. We fund that, so.
Maybe that's something you can discuss with.
Well, I know that he's an employee of Northwest Health that hires that individual.
Okay.
Uh, not us. You know, I know that, you know.
We don't have that control.
We have an interest, but as far as, um, their employees, from what I understand, that's a Northwest Health, uh.
What was the date on that email, remember?
Yeah.
Had to be two months now, it, yeah, I mean, Sims, Red brought it up, but, yeah. I mean, some of us are fortunate enough to live in municipalities where we have, you know, the professionals, you know, on, on standby, you know, importage or Valpo or.
Might check that.
I just think some of these other areas, in my opinion, they deserve better. We need to make sure we have the best available anywhere in this county. Somebody picks up nine-one-one because a loved one has gone down or something.
Well, anytime you have a, the employees, and, did you say a hundred percent?
No.
Well, let me see, I'm just going to share this, is that, you know, you know, I, I think that as a councilman, you know, I've shared this with a couple of the council members, is that we have our, I'm not saying we don't have an interest, but, but, you know, we don't have a say in that.
We fund.
That is, you know, that's why I say we have an interest, but that is not, those are not our employee, he's not our employee.
A hundred percent, it's contracted to a private business?
You know, as far as, you know, you know, we have a lot of other issues at hand as well that are, are responsibility and under our umbrella as a council. And to start getting distracted on things that.
If you think, uh, if you're having a heart attack going down, distracted.
You know, I'm just trying to explain my thought. I let, I let you talk, but we do not hire that individual. He is not our employee. He is an employee of Northwest Regional. And that is their issue that they are the primary entity to be dealing with. I'm not saying we don't have an interest in it and maybe what the outcome is, but, um, you know, I feel reluctant to really, you know, stick my nose in something that is not, he's not our employee. And, uh, you know, um, I mean, again, I'm just, it's just, just my thought that we have a lot of other issues that we need to address as a council that are our responsibility, number one priority. And I guess that is what, uh, I would like my.
Well, emergency services and public safety is, is pretty high up on my list.
Jeremy, who would you have represent EMS?
Jeremy, we're, it's.
We know who you don't want.
High on everybody's list of public.
Who would you want to represent the county? I live out in the county.
Important, that's not.
Okay, so it's important to me, and I have, uh, the Morgan Township Fire Department. They come and respond, and they're pretty good, and so is council, so I understand the point. So who would you like to see? I mean, what suggestions would you have if we wanted to get away from Northwest Health?
Modern, yeah, our emergency service services, me, is going into fire territories, the combination of cities and towns and, and townships. You know, and creating fire territories so every area is covered by a full-time professional.
So your suggestion would be a fire territory?
I think it's time to modernize that. We shouldn't be contracting this county out to a private business for emergency services.
Have you talked to any of the fire departments about this?
We have. We tried to start the conversation, uh, Andy Bozak and I, a couple of years ago. And we tried to begin, go down this path of having this conversation.
And what happened?
Center Township has.
Didn't go very far. Commissioner Biggs didn't want anything to do with it.
Well, I've, I've talked with the fire chiefs of, of, of South County. None of them want it.
Yeah, well, it, it's not going to be an easy conversation. It's going.
Oh, yeah, I, I, trust me, I, the minute I, I, I mentioned it, I thought they were going to get a rope and, you know, hang me.
They may not want it, but what is best? I mean, is it? If we can modernize it and create, you know, it's fire territories and be able to, for them to.
It, it would be my suggestion then, that, um, we get these individuals, uh, fire chiefs of the unincorporated areas, both north and south, east and west, wherever the county is, and have them come to a meeting and hear them out, and then seeing how you are a proponent of fire territories, explain to them, or have someone that you would pick, explain to them why a fire territory is in the best interest of these individuals who do not live in a city proper, or town proper. I mean, that would be the most logical step, would it not, sir?
Yeah, conversation has to, to start, and, and why it matters, Mr. Brickner, is that we, we fund it, you know, and we have a contract. And I, I don't know if the contract's up this year, next year, but the last contract did not include, I believe, Chesterton or Burns Harbor, that's been now handed over to us, you know, to cover that area, so that contract's going to skyrocket, I would imagine.
Probably, yeah.
And, and that's.
We're anticipating.
Porter, Porter, Chesterton, and Burns Harbor, I believe. Porter tried, I was on the redevelopment commission at the time, and they tried like heck, took money out of their funds, and they depleted their funds. They couldn't, they couldn't keep their, their ambulance service going.
What would the cost in comparison, being how we're doing with Northwest Health now, be to a fire territory?
Andy.
Anybody look at that?
Look at what?
The cost of, of operating a fire territory as opposed to giving cash to, uh, Northwest House?
I'm sure you would have to get whatever units would a, agree to come together and.
And that's.
And do a study of some sort if they could agree.
Center Township has excellent fire territory. Our taxes did go up. I live in Center Township, but not extraordinarily.
The fire territory was established with the Valparaiso Fire Chief at the time, Dave Nandorf, and the Center Township trustee.
Exactly.
It had nothing to do with the, the, the city council wasn't, you know, they were kept informed, but it wasn't.
Accepted it.
Right. So that was, and, and with, I think, uh, Councilman Vasquez was saying, really, the fire chiefs and the trustees, I mean, that's where that funding and that initiative came started. And how it came to fruition.
Being a tax increase, because I talked with Chief Nandorf at that time, and he asked me what my concern, and I asked him how much the taxes would go up, because, again, I'm not in favor of, you know, taxes going up because I'm a senior citizen. And he explained to me what it was, and I think it was minimal, like fourteen cents or something like that.
Wasn't too much.
No, it was, it was very acceptable.
Well, once again, we need to get with the unincorporated areas, our chiefs, get them together, give them the facts as we know them for a fire territory, and see how they respond to it. Okay, regardless of whatever tortures or rope they bring, because, like I said, I talked to several of them and they were not happy. They, they feel they can respond, uh, professionally to all the fire and EMS needs. And that's, you know, that's their opinion. If they have facts on paper, they can prove, you know, what they're saying. It, it, it'll be an uphill sell. I'll tell you that right now, a fire territory.
Well, I can honestly say I have no qualms.
Unless it goes to a referendum.
Incorporated Center Township. My husband had a stroke, and I had, I made one call and, um, I was on the phone with a, um, lady from nine-one-one. And, uh, he was taken very well care of. Within a matter of twenty minutes, he was in the hospital and, and received therapy, and, uh, he has no symptoms from that.
Yeah, let's see, I've, I've, I have called the, uh, nine-one-one for Morgan Township Fire, and about the same amount of time from my house to where Porter is now, twenty minutes or less, they had me there. So this is why I say these guys will say, I happened to be there when a fire went. I, I went to go visit and they were throwing a, some type of, uh, party for the community, and the alarm went off. And I, I got to tell you, it was something like out of a movie. These guys were in their suits, they just, and gone in less than a minute.
Dedicated.
Yeah, they're, they're very dedicated, so it, like I said, it's going to be a hard sell, but if it is in the best interest of the county, you're going to have to sell it.
I think we're talking about ambulance service though, but it is, it's fire territory that's blended in with it, yeah.
Right, and, and so Morgan has both EMS and, uh, fire. So, like I said, so does council for that matter. And the majority of the, uh, unincorporated areas down south do, because pretty much down in South County, we're left to fend for ourselves.
And that, whatever that cost may be moving forward with the new municipalities that are under our responsibility now that I'm providing that ambulance service, that, with that increased price tag when it comes, where's that funding source coming from?
Good question. Like, all these things need to be, once again, we need to. We need to get these people together and, and get some information from them, give them information that, uh, those propose, that are proposing fire territory, so they can have a logical decision to make. And let it, the, uh, let it go to the newspapers, let the people of the county see it, let, let them decide as to how they want their services. You know, some in the south end may not want it, some in the north end may, or vice versa, or they may all want it, or may all not want it. But we don't know until we get these facts, figures, to the people who are not only doing the job, but who are going to need the services, and that, it's going to be a big step, and it's not going to happen overnight, but that's the first step in doing it, you know? Like I said, we know what it's not like, how do we correct it? That's all. Simple.
I think, I don't know how long we've been providing ambulance services to say Porter and Chesterton. I think it's been a, been a while. I mean, they pay county taxes, we had hospital funds, I mean, there's a, there's, 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 there's something to say that, you know, I, I know Porter and Valparaiso has their own, and, you know, God bless them, but if they can't pay for it, I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that everybody in the county gets good ambulance service.
I think the last big situation with the ambulance was spoken by Michael I. No pack. That was the last, uh, the beginning. I'm not saying I'm that old, I'm just.
So it's a, it's an important situation, in my opinion, it's one of the most, uh, it's one of the most pressing things you can have is good ambulance service, so, um.
If we had poor ambulance service, wouldn't the people be?
Yes, that, that's what, no, that's why I want to say, we have to be very, I think, in my opinion, we have to be careful here tonight saying, you know, there's, I don't know how many people, eight, ten people, twelve, whatever, saying their, their, their poor leadership versus our citizens saying, hey, we have bad ambulance service. I mean, my mom had health issues, her ambulance came Northwest, they were great. They came there very timely, they, they were great, so I don't think this is, um, an issue of bad ambulance service versus employees having an issue with their boss. Everybody has issues with their boss. That's up for North, that's up to Northwest to, you know, get that situation under control, and I'm sure that they will. I mean.
Are we certain?
Good, is a, is a very good hospital. They don't want to have that out in the open like their ambulance service isn't no good, and, and, you know, Jeremy, they.
Thirty-two people signed it, Red.
I don't know how many people I was just.
Yeah, and, and we know what their true concerns were, why thirty-two people would come sign that. Was it just, I don't like the way you manage me every day? Or are they aware of something bigger that, you know, they're trying to get, you know, people's attention, so.
So how do we find that out?
I don't know. Well, Mike said he had talked.
Well, when it comes to the ambulance contract.
I think we need to dig in on this one and.
Like I said, I'd be concerned if, if there were, tho, tho, I mean, those pe, those thirty-two people, I will guarantee, while they might have a problem with that leader, I guarantee they are professionals, and I guarantee they're all going to do a good job when they come to your house. That much I will tell you. You can be pissed at your boss, but you can, you, you're going to be professional and do your dang job, and I will guarantee everyone that, that drives those ambulances are going to do a dang good job going to anybody's house in Chesterton, Porter, Burns Harbor, or the counties.
I'm not saying that, but they're speaking up too.
But I, you, you, you're right, but when you said professionals, like Porter's just professionals and kind of they are, we have to be very careful here. They are our ambulance service provider.
I'm not, I just, they're, they're a for-profit business. I would, I would rather, I.
And I think their last contract, I don't want to speak out of turn, I thought was pretty reasonable. It seemed to me.
Won't be that, yeah, because they added.
I don't know what they get or what they don't get, but it seemed pretty reasonable to me for a for-profit person, so, um, to.
They were.
To give us what, was it four, five, six?
Quite a, a break on.
Well, we'll have to decide, you know, whatever the new cost comes in, is that what we want to continue to fund? Because we have to fund it, this council.
Well, and I'm sure that if I have conversations, that we can be in that meeting, and we can go over the numbers, and we can hammer them, you know, just like I hammer all my vendors when they come in my office, and I say, hey, you know what, this cost isn't going to work. It has to be lower.
Been trying for years to have this conversation out front before we get, we continue to get to points where we don't have any choices.
I think.
This is a good start.
Fire territories are going to take a long time. I think it's, it's, it's great to talk about, great to have conversation out there, but, um, I think that's going to be a couple of years off before the fire territories.
Mr. President?
Yep.
Go, it's up to you. Where are we going now?
All right, any, any other, this is good conversation. Any other business before the council, before we, uh, open up for public comment? Anybody have anything else to share?
I don't, oh, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, I do. Sorry.
All right.
In regards to nine-one-one, it's not only for ambulance or police service. We had that storm, and then in South County, half mile down the road from me, we had seven telephone poles, looked like some kid just took them and snapped them in half.
I saw pictures on Facebook.
Okay? And, uh, we had one leaning, like it was going to go into the road, and looked like the wires were going to break. So I had a couple of people call me down the road. They said, you're our councilman, right? And they said, you ought to take a look at this. So I drove down there, and I called nine-one-one, and the young lady on there said, hey, uh, I asked her, I don't know if this is the right thing to do, and I told her the situation. She goes, well, we can call R E M C, and I said, no, I want to make you aware that we got a pole, looks like it's ready to go on the road, and that's pretty dangerous, because unless it's sparking, you're not going to see it. And somebody may hit it, and then it sparks, and she goes, oh, okay, I understand. So within an hour of that call to nine-one-one, and I don't know whether they had a pardon getting R E M C out there, making them understand the severity of the situation, within an hour of that phone call that I made, we had R E M C out there, and then they were working on, and they had the poles up before morning. So it, it was great, and, um, i- if nine-one-one, they're not here, I'm sorry, I should have probably said something when she was here. But i- if they did have a pardon, I think it's, uh, kudos go to them by understanding the severity that the area, uh, which was affected, and so, good job, nine-one-one. But i- if they did have a pardon, I think it's, uh, kudos go to them by understanding the severity that the area, uh, which was affected, and so, good job, nine-one-one. That's it.
Very good.
Chesterton did win sectionals in baseball.
Yes.
Just for all you baseball fans out there. Seven-four against Val, like, like I said, all you baseball fans out there.
Morgan Township girls softball.
Didn't Valpo baseball win sectionals too?
There you go.
Ebran.
Ebran there.
Valpo, Valpo, Valpo.
South County.
So.
That was a big upset.
Some pub too? Yeah, Valpo got upset by, uh, I think Crown Point, I believe, which was a pretty big upset, so we play Lake Central down in La Porte, and it's going to be. There's, hey, listen, I'm just, the, the pitchers we have in high school, like when we played probably, these kids are crazy, I mean, they're throwing eighty, ninety miles an hour. I mean, it's the stuff that they do, man, God bless them, you, you see some real athletes out there when you watch these kids play, play baseball. And I'm talking all the teams, they all have studs, Portage, Lake Central, Crown Point.
Portage?
All these, no, they do, every, every, all these, the D A C has a good baseball program.
Let's build some, uh, build some baseball fields, get some, maybe a minor league team here.
There you go.
Economic development.
Do you know any pitchers that are?
Kind of lighter now.
Well.
Generate money.
Rock City, it's been very.
You build it, they will come.
A lot of people visiting it.
We could use.
Everybody should have the opportunity to go out and see.
The only question I have is who wants to go home?
Well, we got the attorney, a public comment attorney's report, Andy.
Okay. Okay, let's move on.
Any other council news? Okay, I'm going to shut down our council meeting and open up for public comment. Do we have any public comment? Go once. Going three times, and we're done, I'm closing the public comment. Uh, let me see, attorney's report.
I will reach out to the tourism board attorney and get that extension. Uh, the only third thing I was going to ask, uh, Mr. President is, I, I don't, did we vote on September?
Oh, the minutes.
Minutes. I didn't know if we had voted on.
I think we skipped the minutes. I made a motion.
I just, that was.
Are we good with the next, next meeting weekend? Okay. We, we skipped over the minutes, Mike.
Well, he, uh, he rushed his, uh, he was reading a little bit.
Oh, okay. All right, we skipped.
It's, it's, Mr. President, it's, it's September last year, it's not a huge.
For dinner. Fight it too.
Okay, no attorney's reports, we skipped the minutes, be on the next agenda. Anything else before we adjourn the meeting? Okay, very good. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you. All right.
I am going to.
Oh.